We're here for a site walk to Dave and Daniel.
Hebert.
And Hebert. Um, I think it's Dan and Daniel.
Yeah.
Um, for discussing boat storage.
Yeah.
Yard.
Yep.
So if you want to show us where we're gonna go.
It over here.
I had some questions about orientation. Maybe. Cause you marked that before we do it, right?
Right.
So go ahead.
Yeah.
So you wanna tell us?
Yep.
What's over there?
So, Great East Lake is on the other side of this road.
Mm-hmm.
On the other side of this road is a series of properties and they're all, um, you know, built out. And that's, uh, the main lake, uh, what people call Second Basin. When I say the main lake, you know, um, you can swim in there and boat in there and so forth. Um, the reason I mentioned it's both, cause she asked where it is. It's not only across the street, but as you go through our property, there is, uh, shorefront on the marsh end of First Basin. And I could show you that. When we get out there. Much easier when we get out there. Yep. Down this placey over here. So just on the entrance. So, uh, we plan the entrance to be off of Lakeside. You guys came in on Lakeside and then turned right onto Red Gate. But our entrance is gonna be on Lakeside, which is right behind this, this mound here. And I'll sho- I'll show you, we marked where the entrance is gonna be. This is Lakeside. This is probably where we'll put the entrance. Oh yeah, I'm trying to show you. That box there is basically one corner. That box. And initially, we're not gonna go around the whole thing. But that's one corner. This is roughly where we're gonna put the gate. You can see there's no berm here. Only a couple of rocks. This berm to your right. It needs to get bigger and bigger as it goes, so it gives us good buffer, so people won't be able to see.
How many acres total here?
Um, on the lot?
Yeah.
Two and a half acres.
Okay.
So we can go either way, but I'll take you this way. We're not gonna touch anything to this area.
Just keeping the orientation.
It's, you know, I'm trying to make it.
I don't think people get it, the whole concept.
Oh. Well, he's gonna have the entrance on Lakeside Drive.
Correct.
And his house has the entrance on, uh, Red Gate.
Correct.
This is another corner. We're basically, you can see we're gonna go straight across and then take off to the hill. That other frontage I talked about, which is on the marsh end, south end of First Basin, right over this hill. If you wanna walk over there, you could see some ice there.
Okay.
Through the water, right away down. John, you mind the, uh? Yep. Um, yeah.
I'm great.
Sorry. Actually, we're way up here. There's a bunch of land. If you go over, uh, so, we're like up here. We're gonna go through the cars.
Is this the road we just passed?
Yep, yep.
Right there?
Nope, nope, nope. This is the road.
Okay.
That's Lakeside.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're like this.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And we're way up here because there's a, there's, uh, a lot of land going that way towards the marsh. Yep.
Just wanted to get our orientation right.
Good.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, with this way. That's the road over there. And we're over in here right now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, actually, I'm there. Actually, they're actually kayak around the loop in there.
Right.
It's, it's tough to kayak in there. There's so many old stuffs.
Yeah.
It can be done. It can be done. I've been on a paddleboard, but, um, only when the water's really high.
It's what, three hundred feet probably from that drop off?
Yeah, quite a bit. You know, our thought is, is if you wanted us to, as we, you know, start leveling stuff, we could create a little berm on this back edge. But we're pretty far from the edge. And there's a lot of buffer between us and the water. But we're gonna go straight across. I didn't wanna take you through there, so let's follow the tracks.
Looks like the almost kind of natural.
Just before we go, do we know the distance between the boundary of where you might place boats to the water? Has that been measured and marked, or do we know? Are we estimating?
Um, we've estimated, um, but we haven't had it measured by, um, the surveyor.
And what's your estimate?
We think it's a little over two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
About two seventy-five.
And how big is the proposed boatyard here? How many, I mean, not boatyard, excuse me, storage?
I think it's about two and a half to three acres. But, uh, we haven't measured that. I, I can measure it out. We do have scaled plans. We can measure it out.
So this is open storage? There's no building?
Open storage, no buildings. Yep.
And the boats will be winterized?
Yeah, so what's those two over there that we passed?
Mm-hmm.
They're wrapped?
Some of them.
No, they, they, they may have fuel.
Yeah, they'll be treated.
And that's why I'm asking that, those questions, because I don't think, uh, estimates will suffice, because we're near the water. I think it's, my view is it would be, it's gonna need to be measured, um, and marked, and restrictions on expansion as far as, you know, where it is. Uh, because it, it's an important issue.
And like the other thing that needs to be marked out too, is where you do your actual operations of winterizing as opposed to where you're putting your boat.
Yep.
To, you know, the area you're gonna be, you know, using.
We're, we're gonna have a-
For the operation itself of winterizing and, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we'll have a plot, whi- which will show where you're gonna put the pad down.
Take that plan, you put everything on this plan. Distances and measures, right? And what, what part you're looking for.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I'm not- Will you guys write this up for us so we, so we can check everything off, or, or do you want me to just go with what I heard here and create a plan?
I think Jason can give you the advice, right?
Okay.
What's gonna be on that? Well, and also when you come in to meet with the board, um, you know, if we start talking about conditions, you'll know.
Yep.
There may be things. So I wasn't, um, like, trying to put you on the spot or being critical about where, what stage of the process you're at now. But I'm just saying, I think it's, it's gonna be important that there are measurements and it's more defined.
Okay.
As you go along.
Yep.
The more detail you can provide, the easier it is.
Right. Good.
Thanks.
With the actual boat winterization.
Yeah, I get screwed, I get screwed up all the time. Oh, yeah.
A lot of things.
That's like a little pit.
Oh, no, I see.
And with some easy boats.
There was a, you go with the speed balance.
Exactly.
Yes, it was. There's a bunch of them on this road. If you wanna know where to un reclaim, uh, un, uh, not, that's okay, I can drive down this road. So this is the other back corner? That marker right over there?
Mm-hmm.
Basically.
There's another one off to the left up here.
This is a straight shot from where we just were.
No, people have to go to pit over there to revegetate.
That's the other corner? Oh, so this is the back corner?
Yep.
Yeah, close.
Lady found a deposit up north.
Yeah.
Oh, I see it.
Still off the marsh.
Yeah, I see it.
Just on this, on this.
I meant toward it.
Yeah.
Yep. Kind of on her long term. And then it just goes, angles back towards Lakeside.
And what's over here?
This is, um, owned by, I think, Eastern Materials, uh-
It's another pit, old pit.
Uh, property line is, uh, thirty, forty feet in there.
So is that pit functioning right now? Do you know?
Hasn't functioned in, geez, twenty years, I bet.
But I bet you it's still active if you wanted to ex- excavate on it.
I believe that the, uh, the license is still active.
Yeah.
But they haven't hauled anything out.
No.
Old equipment in there. It's been rusted for twenty plus years. Used to be like blackberries to me.
What's your estimate on how many boats you could get in here, or you think you'll get in here?
I think for us, it's, uh, very slow, uh, ramp up, just cause a lot of people have places to store their boats already. You know, our estimate is, we'd like to get to maybe, you know, thirty or to fifty in the next, you know, five to ten years.
Okay.
But we couldn't, as you can see, if you, if you were to pack them really tight, you could get more than that. I don't think we've actually sat there and figured out how many.
Yeah. Um, is this just boats or RVs, motorhomes and stuff?
Um, our, our thoughts right now are, is just boats, but we'd like to be able to do RVs if that's possible.
RVs, yeah, motorhomes and stuff. I'm just curious.
Yep.
How about regular campers?
How about cars? I'm just curious.
Just a toe behind camper?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cars, any cars or anything? No? Okay, okay.
You just got that one that didn't start this morning?
No different than a boat. It's gonna be out.
I'm just making a joke, sorry.
There's no building, right? It's gonna be outside, so.
All outside.
Cause I had the same, I have an antique car and I was thinking, oh, storage, but it's outside.
Yeah, yeah.
You just mentioned might, maybe putting light posts in solar powered for, uh, the cameras on it, just in case kids come in here. Which I wouldn't be opposed to solar powered cameras.
Well, first we have to get our solar panel.
(laughing).
You're a little-
No, it would be unfair, you know, we'd be unfair if you sneak in here and they're never gonna see ourselves. You know, someone's boat comes up damaged.
That was an off the record comment and on the record.
(laughing).
We do have comedy here.
Yes.
In the winter.
I said to John as we were walking in, maybe we should be doing show tunes or something for our viewers.
(laughing).
I could have brought the food.
As you can see, if somebody was in the marsh area, you can't see it because of the trees.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
From Lakeside, you can't see it.
Right.
From Red Gate, you can't see it.
Right.
No, you can't.
So, I have a question about vegetation.
Uh.
So the, the vegetation that's here, what, what are your plans? Are you gonna clear like an acre at a time?
Yep. Our thought was is probably a half to one acre right in the middle here, and then slowly move out.
Cause there's a lot of habitat here and I didn't know if you would consider leaving anything in between your parking areas for, uh, the wildlife.
We had thought about that, especially during expansion. We don't have to clear full blocks.
Okay. Thank you. What's this?
That's what I was thinking. I was thinking.
Sure?
Yeah, when I came out.
No, I don't know.
That was a Russian trap.
Got a little, burrowed a little hole in the piece.
Could be a weasel.
Pretty much.
We're always happy. Well, I got a permit for this stuff. Yeah, I had something come across my desk the other day.
I'm gonna stay here.
I had to make sure. Except that falls late enough. Yep. Yep. I believe.
Uh, yeah, I, I told them that you, they were gonna have to contact you.
Yeah.
I wasn't, I was just curious on this stuff.
Any other questions about the lot before we head back?
This is in the middle. Do we just walk around this?
We walk by it. We came right up here. We walked that way.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Got it.
Uh, that doesn't hold water or anything.
Right, right. I remember the question now.
Yep.
Oh yeah, this is the entrance.
Yep, there's Lakeside right there.
Yeah, I am, okay.
Completely irrelevant question. Is there a road association for Lakeside in the stretch?
So, there's a road association further down and it's not called Lakeside at that point.
Yeah.
Um, we're in the process of, of putting together a road association for Red Gate.
Yeah.
And, uh, we hope to get it stood up, um, by July or August of this year. And it will incorporate the part of Lakeside from H Road to that corner.
Okay.
And we're pretty far along with it. We met with a lawyer yesterday. We've had, uh, folks for insurance. Uh, we've got most of our documents ready. Uh, we hope to have the informational meeting and the organizational meeting in the ju-, uh, May to July timeframe.
Okay.
Right now, it's, uh, voluntary.
Okay.
I do have a bunch, some answers to those questions that you had, you had sent me over, so.
Great.
Can you even hear me?
Yep, yep, except for we're right with the gate.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Big surprise for me sort of here.
Are they still functioning? You're gonna use it?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yeah, cause we're in for a promo to put in a set. Or even O T D.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Now I'm on camera.
Right, right, right. That's a feather in your cap.
That used to be the big. Old ones. That's most of our day is on the streets when we have a lot of, uh, San Pedro died nine years earlier. Little bit to his, uh, sister, and she didn't want it. So there was fires in here, parties, people shooting all the time.
Yeah.
You got people treating their families. Most of them are pretty good. And sure that the sand burn behind them and everything. People shooting around me all the time. Apparently two of that's hiding their houses.
All right, Tommy.
Yeah.
I mean, he did.
He's got. And there's, you see it tied down inside? A string basically that you wrap it in.
Yeah. Trying to hit, they actually.
So they've identified. Oh, nice.
Yeah, yeah. Eat off the apple trees. I was not cracking him one day and then figured out he was cracking me.
For the ordinance?
Yeah.
The professional job of auditing it.
More to him.
I have math. If anybody has any questions or I kinda got the orientation.
Good with it. You guys have any questions or?
I have one question, but, um, it just occurred to me on the walk. Cause I know there are, um, signs up when you enter the state about bringing boats in and invasive species and so forth, and the importance of having the boat cleaned. And given that we're on the New Hampshire border, it occurred to me that, you know, you might get customers from New Hampshire wanting to store boats here. So my question is, and I don't know if anybody knows the answer, whether, how quickly anything on a boat would die? Um, is there any potential for like a cross contamination between the boats that are stored here? Looks like this gentleman.
Well, I can, I'm not a planning board member. I'm just a member of the public. I'm, I'm Charlie Crespi. I'm the president of Gilia. And I'm involved with all the invasive species stuff.
And so the-
Great East Lake and Poohland Association. It's on the Lake Association. And, uh, it's generally five days is what they talk about. And, and boats coming out of storage are extremely low risk.
Yep, great. Well, I, I kind of assumed if something's brought over and it's stored for the winter, it's gonna be dead by spring anyway.
Yeah.
But I just thought I would raise the concern, cause I don't know.
Yeah.
And did you come with any particular concerns or questions? Because?
Well, I, I was, I just asked the question, cause if there's gonna be a public hearing, I think the appropriate place for me to ask that would be in, in the public hearing. I did, I called and, and talked to your brother. You know, and, you know, so there's things we need to learn about at this point and, uh, and I need to discuss it with my board.
Yep.
And it just, and I've made the commitment with the Heberts who live on the lake that I'm not gonna surprise them with anything.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, you know, it's, you've been asking all the right questions here, you know, about.
Because I don't know if you're familiar with the process, but part of it will be that we can impose conditions if, you know, if they're related reasonably and so forth. So it is important that we know what people's concerns are, so that, it doesn't have to be today.
Yeah.
But so that if there are conditions and, and, you know, so we can try to work together to make, make things happen to
Yeah.
everyone's satisfaction as best as we can.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm not here as an individual per se. I'm the president of Gilia. So anything, I need to discuss it with my board and, and make the decision. Public hearing would be ideal for that.
I am here as an individual, even though I look like I'm two.
So Dan, you, uh, we have a lot of stuff that the planning board, uh, have to, has to accomplish before we really get into the public hearing. Do you mind pushing this off until the end of February?
No.
For, to go with the public hearing and then to review the conditions?
Yep.
Cause I'm looking at it, maybe do the public hearing on the seventeenth. I think is the third Friday, third, third Thursday of, uh, February.
Okay.
Is the planning board okay with that, or you would like to go further? Would you wanna go the first week, first Thursday in March?
Depending on how.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it.
Do you mind if we push to the first one in March?
Yeah, cause you don't, you're not really worried about it until?
October. This coming, of this October.
Okay, so we're gonna be looking first Thursday in March, or the third?
You have to finish the application with the-
Well, I was, I was just gonna ask, what do I have to do before that meeting?
So you guys wanna go?
There was winterri- what was it? All we needed to, what was that? Uh, winterization services that has to come off, I think.
Yeah.
On your initial paperwork. You had winterization services that has to come off.
Okay.
You need to have only what you're applying to do now on the application, or not necessarily what you might wanna do later. Unless you wanna be subject to the scrutiny or criteria to be met in order to do those other things.
Okay.
So, but you don't wanna necessarily, like, let's say winterization is a long-term goal and it may or may not ever happen. You wouldn't wanna have your application denied or have all these additional requirements. You wouldn't want to have your application denied, or have all these additional requirements put on it for something that you may never do.
So I think we're fine with taking winterization off. I think what we would like to have on there is wrapping.
Yep, whatever you want to do, whatever you want to have approved to do now, is what should be on your application.
If you put your detail on, you bring it closer to here, obviously, closer to the house, or you just detail on back there?
Um, that's a good question, I think we'll have to, yeah, figure out that answer.
Detailing adds chemicals, chemicals leaching to the ground, and then it could be a different problem altogether. Even most minimal, but, you know, there could be an issue. Any other questions?
So do you want, do you want him to provide us with the, the actual measurements for his, for the USA, he wanted, uh, so, I guess that, yeah, maybe a plot plan with the measurements from the wetland?
Yeah, and show where the pad's going to be on the block.
Yeah, so you had that on the initial plan, right? You had, you had the actual pad on it, we just didn't transfer it onto theirs.
Pad, those sort of spots, you know, just how you want to lay out your operation.
Yep.
If you could show it on the map with some measurements, distances.
Did you reference the zoning ordinances? Because there's a section in there that says exactly what you need to come in the planning board with.
Okay. Let's look at that.
I'll, I'll, I'll send it over to you.
So, un-
Go ahead.
I was just, unrelated to this, um, I sent out a series of emails yesterday. I don't know if anyone's looked or not. Just as talking points and trying to give some focus to where we might go on the matter's pending the planning board now. Not related to your project, just general, other, other projects. Yeah, okay.
I didn't see them yet.
So, March, will the first Thursday in March give you enough time for the, for the measurements and surveying app, or?
It really depends on the surveyor, I think.
Right, right.
So you're, you're looking for the, uh, actual surveyor measurements, or are you...
You don't want approximates, you're looking for, for more set-in-stone measurements, yeah?
Problem with this survey is though...
Yeah, um...
Well, if you could take a tape. Get a hundred foot, get a, you know, a hundred, two hundred foot tape.
It has measured.
Yeah, you know, I don't think we expect an exact location, because you can see it's an entire pit, but we need to know the location in reference to other things.
Yep, we can do that.
Where you want to do what.
Yep.
And that can be like a starting point too, for our discussions, like, you know, if you, if you come in and meet with us, and there's still something we need, we just ask you to come back with what it is we need.
So we had this, uh, this fourteen and a half acres fully surveyed when we, when we built this house. So I could take measurements and put it on that, that map, which, which that's a smaller version of it.
Yeah, you just kind of say from this line, it's two hundred and fifty feet over here, and, you know...
Just as long as everything is on it that's current.
Yep.
Just the, the map that you're using.
Right.
Open area, et cetera.
Okay.
That's what we ran into with the other one.
So I guess we'll plan for that first Thursday?
Every time there will be... I know you, I know you thought of a process, so...
Yeah, I'll send you over an email, uh, Monday or something like that. Hey, I'll reference the ordinance and copy paste it and send it over to you.
Okay.
I was saying, we'll give you a list of things that you might need or you will need.
Okay.
But I think pretty much it's more or less just the survey at this point, but we'll go through that.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.